Good evening. Time being seven o'clock. I call the June 18th, 2025 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements from the Chair. All citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person. To view the live meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29. Meetings are also archived by Franklin TV on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and again shown on repeat on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29 for those who miss the live meeting. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number, 929-205-6099. This will not permit participation in the meeting. To participate in the meeting remotely, citizens are able to join a Zoom webinar using Zoom webinar ID 812-49962535. Then you need to hit the pound sign. Once again, the webinar ID is 812-49962535. Any participants who wish to speak during the webinar must enter their full name and email address when joining the webinar. All participants will be automatically muted upon joining the webinar. In order to speak, participants who have entered full name and email address will need to select the raise hand function to request to be unmuted. All speakers will be required to state their full name and street address before commenting. Councilor Cormia Ledger will be a little late this evening. He had a family issue he had to deal with. We do have some upcoming events. First one is Franklin Municipal Building will be closed tomorrow, June 19th, in observance of Juneteenth. Regular business hours will resume on Friday, June 20th. Franklin Farmers Market is taking place this Friday, June 20th, on the Town Common. Stop by Fridays from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., running June through October. The 43rd Franklin Fourth of July Celebration will take place Wednesday, July 2nd through Sunday, July 6th, on the Franklin Town Common. Fireworks will take place on Saturday, July 5th, at the Franklin High School. Next Friday, June 27th, kicks off Franklin's 2025 Concerts on the Common. There will be two performances this Friday. The first performance will be from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., followed by a second performance from 5:30 to 6:30. Next item under announcements from the Chair. Chief McLaughlin, did you want to address the council?
Chairman Chief McLaughlin, like permission to read a memo dated today from myself made out to the Town Administrator Jamie Helen. That's okay?
Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. It is with mixed emotions that I provide you notice of my intention to retire as the Chief of the Franklin Fire Department effective on or before October 1st, 2025. There are two equally important reasons for my decision to leave this role. I have been proud to hold since July 8th, 2019, at this point in time. First is my desire to spend more time with my family, particularly my dad, who recently turned 89. In fact, he just turned 89 on Father's Day, three days ago. And second, one of the first goals I set when I became chief was to build a succession plan of firefighters who could build upon the work we've done together and to lead the department in the future. At this point, there are now several highly qualified internal candidates who are ready to take the helm. I cannot thank you enough for giving me the opportunity to serve the town of Franklin in my capacity as Fire Chief and MA Director. It has been an honor and privilege to lead a great fire department composed of highly respected firefighters and paramedics who have do a phenomenal job every day serving this community. I am proud and fortunate to have had the opportunity to be part of such a special department and administration. The last six years have been enjoyable, rewarding, and deeply gratifying. The department has accomplished many milestones during the past six years. One, a post-civil service reorganization incorporating battalion chiefs, attaining an ISO 1 rating, class 1 rating. Institution of aggressive training program. Replacement of all department frontline vehicles. However, I never got my helicopter.
I tried, Chief.
I appreciate it. Increasing our staffing level to 61 firefighters and paramedics up to July 1st, 2025. Placing a third impact time ambulance in service up to July 1st, 2025. Replacing our CAD software system and awarding in excess of $3 million in grant funding. None of this could have been possible without the extreme support and hard work of all the members of the department, for which I am extremely grateful. I consider the most important accomplishment to be that there has been no fire-related fatality or serious injury to civilians or personnel in the recent years. Thank you, Jamie, for having the courage to take a chance by appointing me as your first department head in your capacity as TA. Your support for me and the department during my tenure was a testament to your commitment to public safety in the community. I am also deeply appreciative of the Town Council and the Finance Committee for all your support. They face fiscal challenges every day, yet are steadfast and never compromising the safety of the town residents. I am truly thankful to the residents of Franklin, who welcomed me with open arms and stood with us in making these years both successful and memorable. I will always consider this town of Franklin my second home.
That's a tough act to follow.
You're it.
All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 22nd, 2025.
So moved.
I'll go back.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes from May 22nd. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post. Motion carries. The Chief got me all messed up here, so we'll go back to Citizens' comments. Citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. In compliance with General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, the Open Meeting Law, the council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during Citizens' comments. The Town Council may ask the Town Administrator to review the matter, and nothing herein shall prevent the Town Administrator from correcting a misstatement of fact during Citizens' Commons. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Mark, name and address, please.
Thank you. Mark Minne Kelly, 31 Longfellow Drive in Franklin. Thank you, Chairman Mercer. Thank you, Town Councilors, Administrator Helen. First, let me once again thank each of you for the countless hours and energy that you give to this town every day. In past meetings, I've requested that the Town Council review the status of the subsidized housing inventory, the SHI, in Franklin. I've suggested that the Town Council should develop a targeted level of SHI for the various town boards and developers to be aware of and to move toward, rather than only being concerned that Franklin simply meet the minimum 10% standard set by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I believe Chairman Mercer has agreed to add this topic to one of the Town Council's July or August meeting agendas, which I truly appreciate. Tonight, I'd like to propose an idea for consideration on this topic. As you are probably aware, the Commonwealth requires most communities to meet or exceed a threshold of 10% of units to be on the subsidized housing inventory, which Franklin has already exceeded. But maybe you're not aware of how that SHI percentage is calculated. Did you know that for a new 40B rental housing project of 265 units, for example, which has 63 affordable units, that all 265 units are counted towards the subsidized housing inventory percentage? I guess there were reasons to set up the SHI calculation in this way, but Franklin's current SHI of 10.86% does not actually mean that 10.86% of the units in Franklin are affordable or income restricted. My proposal to the Town Council is that Franklin adopt a new metric or target for the town, something I might call the A-S-H-I, or the Actual Subsidized Housing Inventory, that only counts the actual number of units which are affordable in each rental project, rather than the total number of units, including the market rate units. Only then can we use this metric to understand our progress toward making Franklin a more affordable place to live. As a starting point, I would recommend setting the target for this new metric, the Actual Subsidized Housing Inventory, to 10%. It seems a reasonable starting point for our community to strive towards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone else in council chambers? Please, name and address. Alan.
Thank you, Councilor Mercer, Chairman Mercer. My name is Alan Earls. I live at 23 Marvin Avenue. I'm the Chair of the Franklin Historical Commission, and I'm here to mention that next Wednesday, June 25th, is the 75th anniversary of the start of the Korean War, which ended up taking in hundreds of Franklin residents, many on very short notice because it was totally unexpected. A lot of people like the late Howard Crawford had already served in World War II, and they were suddenly told they had to leave immediately, in his case, leaving behind a wife, almost in labor. The Historical Commission has put together a very small pop-up exhibit in the lobby, and next week, we hope to have a small ceremony for some of the veterans, but I just wanted to make people aware of it, people on the council as well as people at home. This is a pretty significant thing that involves a lot of Franklin residents over the years. Secondly, we do not have a program for Juneteenth, but we're talking to people, and next year we will, because it's a very important holiday for everybody in America to be aware of and to think about. So it's a holiday, but it's also something to be thoughtful about. Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, is there anyone out there in Zoomland that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Zoomland's small this evening.
Very small.
Any... Thank you, Amy. Okay. Moving on. Next item on the agenda is Proclamations and Recognitions, and we have one this evening, and it's Electric Youth from Franklin School for the Performing Arts. Ray Lynn, if you want to...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ray Lynn Mercer, and this is Electric Youth. We're happy to be here for our annual audience with the Franklin Town Council. Turning the other way, friends.
Where?
They're the Town Council.
They can see you on TV.
We are getting ready to leave for Europe a week from tonight. We will be on our way for a three-and-a-half-week concert tour with 13 concerts through Italy, Hungary, and Austria. These young people work very, very hard. They're young musical theater performers, great students, and they... Some are preparing to pursue the performing arts in college and career, but they're all going to be arts advocates when they go on to college and beyond. I'm going to let them introduce themselves now.
I'm Annie Corbin. I'm from Norfolk, and I'm a sophomore at Mount St. Charles Academy.
My name is Michael Workes. I'm from Norfolk, and I am a rising senior at Mount St. Charles Academy.
I'm Brooke DeAngelis. I'm a rising junior at Medway Middle School, High School.
I'm Pete Phil. I'm a rising senior at Franklin High School.
I'm Evan Eastman. I recently graduated from Franklin High School, and I'm on to the University of New Hampshire to study wildlife.
I'm Devin DeAngelis. I just graduated from Medway High School, and I will be studying music education next year, also at the University of New Hampshire.
I'm Olivia Baker. I just graduated from Blackstone Valley Tech, and I will be attending Missouri State University in the fall for musical theater.
I'm Derek Curley. I just recently graduated from Franklin High School, and I'll be getting my Bachelor of Music in musical theater at Oklahoma City University in the fall.
I'm Haley Holbig, and I'll be going into my sophomore year at Franklin High School.
I'm Liam Nolan DeHune, and I just finished my junior year at Franklin High School.
My name's Bayard Freegon, and I just finished out my freshman year at Franklin High School.
I'm Helena Cornwell from North Attleboro, and I'm going to be a junior at Bishopfield High School.
I'm Catherine LeBlanc, and I'm wrapping up my junior year at Kewell High School.
I'm Angelina Willey, and I'm from Franklin, and I'm a rising senior at Mount St. Charles Academy.
When we travel, we go with an eight-piece band. You can see the whole show at the Black Box tomorrow night and Friday night. Our Bon Voyage concerts will happen then. We'll be on the Franklin Common as part of the Franklin Concerts on the Common when we get back from the tour. But as we travel, I like to consider these young people ambassadors of America's youth and ambassadors of our community and our school at FSBA. We have the lucky opportunity to work with Broadway professionals throughout the season, and each year, a young man by the name of Jim Hogan, who is a phenomenal arranger of a cappella music, writes us one special song. We are going to be releasing our a cappella single tomorrow night, 12:01. You can pre-save it if you follow us on social media. But we use this song to be able to thank the communities where we travel. If the mayor has invited us, or if a tourism office has invited us, frequently, we end our visit there with a chants after the equipment is taken down and the band is not there. The kids have a chance to say thank you. It seems maybe appropriate tonight to direct that thank you to Chief McLaughlin and the Fire Department. So are you ready? Are you where you belong?
My heart adjusts. One, two, three.
I've had the time of my life, though I've never felt this way before. Yes, I swear it's the truth, and I owe it all to you. I've waited for so long, and I finally got someone to share my pain. I saw the writing on the wall, and I thought this magical fantasy. Passion in our eyes, there's a way we put the skies, and secretly we are. So we take advantage, and we see what you understand, the urgency. I don't want to take. I can't get enough. Who's gonna tell you something? I just love you, because I've had the time of my life. I've never felt this way before. Yes, I swear it's the truth, and I owe it all to you. I've had the time of my life, though I've never felt this way before. Yes, I swear it's the truth, and I owe it all to you. I've had the time of my life. I've had the time of my life.
I guess they are in the proclamation. Okay, I have a proclamation honoring Electric Youth on the occasion of their 2025 European Tour, whereas Franklin is home to the Franklin School for the Performing Arts and its extremely talented musical theater ensemble known as Electric Youth. And whereas this exceptional group of young performers will be embarking on their 2025 European Tour in July, where they will perform with the renowned Boston Showband throughout Italy, Hungary, and Austria, including a benefit for the Jane Goodall Foundation in Vienna. And whereas during their time overseas, Electric Youth will assume the role of ambassadors of America's youth and will proudly represent the Franklin School for the Performing Arts and the town of Franklin as they travel using the power of the arts to connect with communities abroad. Now therefore be it known that the Electric Youth Musical Theater Ensemble is recognized with pride and best wishes by the Town Council of the Town of Franklin as they set out on their 2025 European Tour as ambassadors of America's youth and representatives of Franklin, signed Thomas D. Mercer, Chairman Franklin Town Council. We're going to take just a two-minute recess here so we can get a picture of the council with the kids.
Recording stopped.
So stay right there. Reversing.
Can we bring the chief up?
Chief's voice, I don't know.
Should you form two lines?
I don't know. They'll make speeds decide where we go on.
I got a lot to say.
You at least need a seat over whoever's behind you.
Yeah. Haley, Haley, I'm not standing here. Maybe you can drink a little water.
That's tomorrow.
This year, it's like, find a window.
Find a window. Make sure you can see the camera.
Nice work.
You already got the smile, so see the camera. There we go. There we go. Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
That's why I didn't like guys.
You don't feel threatened.
I love my friend.
Recording in progress.
We'll bring the June 18th meeting of the Franklin Town Council back to order. Next item on the agenda is appointments. First one is Council on Aging, Elizabeth Sawyer. Clerk will read the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an appointment for the Council on Aging for Elizabeth Sawyer, 10 Pier Tree Lane, Franklin Mass, 02038. The Town Administrator has appointed Elizabeth Sawyer to serve as a member of the Council on Aging with a term to expire on June 30th, 2026. Mr. Chairman motioned to ratify the appointment by the Town Administrator of Elizabeth Sawyer to serve as a member of the Council on Aging with a term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Motion in a second. Discussion, Jamie?
Yeah. Liz is here. I think everybody wants to see Liz. Everyone knows her. Liz, I think you're running for office next. I think it's... Mayor might be in your future, yeah. But I think we all know Liz at the senior center and grateful she stepped up to the plate.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Thank you.
Seeing none, the vote will come on the appointment of Elizabeth Sawyer to the Council on Aging. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Welcome, Liz. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Welcome, Liz. Thank you very much. Okay, next appointment is Disability Commission. Cheryl Fisher, clerk, will read the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an appointment to the Disability Commission for Cheryl Fisher, 69 Central Park Terrace, Franklin, Mass. 020 through 8. Town Administrator has appointed Cheryl Fisher to serve as a member of the Disability Commission with a term to expire on June 30, 2025.
Second.
Nope. Motion to ratify the appointment by the Town Administrator of Cheryl Fisher to serve as a member of the Disability Commission with a term to expire on June 30, 2025.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie.
I talked to Cheryl on the phone. I know the Disability Commission has met with her. She'll be a fantastic advocate. She lives at the Housing Authority and she really wants to get involved. So, that's that. And she deserves one of the applause, too. She really is. She's a great member of the Disability Commission and we're very, very grateful for her stepping up to the plate.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to appoint to the Disability Commission Cheryl Fisher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item. First of all, thank you to both Elizabeth and Cheryl for the giving of your time to these committees. Okay, moving on, license transactions. We have one this evening, Farmer Winery Farmers Market License, La Cantina Winery. Clerk will read the transaction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a license transaction for Farmer Winery Farmers Market License for Mr. Robert Vazella, located at La Cantina Winery at 230 Cottage Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038. This is a request for a Farmer Winery Farmers Market License to allow sale of bottled wine at the Franklin Farmers Market pursuant to Chapter 138, Section 15F. Motion to approve the issuance of a Farmer Winery Farmers Market License to Robert Vazella of La Cantina Winery Company.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie. I know Bob's online.
Yeah, it's the standard annual approval that the state makes us do to approve the same license that he's had every year. And if you want to give him a round of applause, too, he's got a hell of a wine. We all know that, we all know.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Jones.
We just need to convince him to sell the pizza at the farmer's market. Right. It's the food tube.
It's a food truck.
Yeah. Any other comments? Seeing none... Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Plaguey.
Just a question. When they sell these bottles, are they allowed to be opened on the common?
No. No. No.
They can do a one-ounce cup. They can do samples. They can do a tasting of, I think it's a one-ounce cup, but they can't open any of the bottles.
Okay, but the people that are purchasing them?
No.
No.
They can't? Okay, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on the agenda is Presentations and Discussion. And we have one this evening and it's the Polco National Community Survey Results. And Jamie, do you want to...
Sure. I'm going to invite Kate and Sonia.
Kate and Sonia, come.
Just as a little bit of a background for people that are at home that may not know what all this is. So, this is a national community survey done by a company called Polco that we work through the parent organization from the Mass Municipal Association. So, there's a very deep credibility, as you'll see in Sonia's slideshow. There's about a dozen or so of communities in Massachusetts. You'll notice some names that people, some other communities that get talked about in this community quite often, Needham, Natick, others that are on here that do this survey. The main goal of these surveys is to do a random sample. They will go through this a little bit in the presentation, but just for folks at home, there was 5,000 random sample surveys sent out to folks at home this year. About 20% was the response rate, about 1,000 homes. And why is this different? This is very different, as you know, from a regular survey that we do. We do a lot of them for master plan, open space plan, but a lot of those responses are typically the same people. And so, this really aims at trying to get a much better representation from throughout the community. Oftentimes, people feel nervous about coming in here. Maybe there's a language barrier. I know as they'll go through in the presentation, we did pay for service to have multiple languages so that it would be able to be treatable from all the folks for their native languages. And so, what the goal is really with this project was if you look at the Needhams and the Naticks and some of the other communities that will be on the map later, they do these random sample surveys every two or five years at regular intervals. This, to me, is something like audits, right? 15 years ago, the town may not have done audits. Now, we do an audit every year. Now, we do an enhanced audit every year. And we build in our infrastructure essentially that kind of quality service. I think this is a pilot program. To be clear and make sure everybody at home knows, this was not paid for through local tax dollars. This was paid for through a federal grant. And ultimately, this is trying to give the council and the other elected officials and leaders in the community an idea if they want to continue on this type of surveying. This is going to give you very good data on where your strengths are, where your investments are, and where some of your weaknesses are, and where public policy can help. Some of these data sets can help hopefully inform all of you and all of us on what the priorities of the community are. So, we have with us today, nobody, everybody knows Kate Hinckley, obviously, our Director of G.I.S., but also a representative, the Executive Vice President from Polco, Sonia Wytick is also here tonight. She's going to go through a slideshow. Kate's going to go through her slideshow. And then, obviously, at the end, there'll be a great opportunity for questions and dialogue and discussion. So, without further ado, I'll pass it over to Sonia and Kate.
Sonia's going to start off and then I'm going to come in and then Sonia's going to finish off.
Please. Teamwork.
Yes, exactly. So, I just want to thank the Town Council for inviting me here. And I'm happy to present the results of your National Community Survey from 2025. Before I begin, I would like to thank Jamie Helen and Kate Hinckley for our primary contacts throughout the survey process. They provided a lot of thoughtful and detailed feedbacks so that we could do a really good job for you. I would like to also acknowledge my colleague Lily Vasquez, who guided the Franklin NCS this year. She did the bulk of the work for this important project and I get to come and get all the glory. So, a little bit about us. Polco provides tools local governments use to empower resident voices. We strive to make civil online engagement accessible for your community. NRC is the research arm of Polco, and that's the National Research Center. And we've worked with hundreds of jurisdictions nationwide over the past 30 years. I started with NRC in 2005, so this is my 20th year with this group. And it's been an amazing honor to work with councils and local governments all across the nation and doing important performance measurement work. To just speak a little to what he was saying, that, you know, like, we think of this as like your ultimate outcome is whether or not your residents are satisfied if they're living in a good quality community. And so, this is this kind of report card, this performance measurement that you can track over time can be really helpful in understanding that. We work with a lot of local governments. We're very proud to share our thought leadership. And so, you know, if you follow us on Polco, you can see a lot of cool things that other cities are doing as well with research. So, bringing resident voices into your planning and performance measurement is definitely a best practice and you are an excellent company. There are a variety of ways that survey results are used. Most commonly jurisdictions we work with monitor trends and resident opinion over time to inform budget processes and strategic plans. Our results also allow you to benchmark your community, your community-specific characteristics and services against other communities in our benchmark database. Our hope is that these findings will add context to your work and spur ideas. The National Community Survey itself is a standardized, five-page, comprehensive survey used to assess resident opinion about their community and local government. The survey questions are categorized into 10 facets of community livability that you'll see here. It provides a holistic picture of Franklin from the perspective of residents. These facets have been identified through extensive research as those that are the most impactful on quality of life. There are many survey items included in each of the 10 facets and the facets align with municipal departments. So, it makes it easier for town staff to quickly find information that's most relevant to their specific work. How a survey is conducted really matters and we use our expertise to ensure your results are representative. We select our sample without bias and make statistical corrections for common response disparities such as older adults tending to respond more often and in higher proportions than younger adults. All Franklin households were eligible and the U.S. postal list with all Franklin households was purchased. And the zip codes were compared to the G.I.S. boundaries provided by your town. 5,000 addresses were randomly selected to receive the survey and they received two mailings beginning on January 8. The survey was open for six weeks. The first mailing was a postcard invitation and the second was contained a cover letter, a paper survey questionnaire, and a postage-paid envelope to return the survey. Both mailings included a web link to respond to the survey online. So, they could respond through mail or online, given whatever preference they had. The survey was also available in English, Spanish, Haitian, Creole, Hindi, and simplified Chinese. 973 completed surveys were received, providing a response rate of 20% and a margin of error of plus or minus 3 percentage point. This is an excellent result. Most communities we work with get closer to 300 to 400 responses and have a margin of error of plus or minus 5%, which is considered a best practice industry standard. So, plus or minus 3% is really high quality. In addition to the randomly selected probability sample of households, a link to an online, community-wide, open participation survey was also publicized by the Franklin staff. That open participation survey was open to all town residents and became available on February 5. The survey remained open for two weeks and 523 responses were received. So, that is also a really great response. That second survey is just to make sure that anyone in the city who want, or in the town who wants to participate is able to. This presentation and our report is based on the 973 from the random sample. One of the advantages to local government for participating in our community survey is that you can compare to communities across the nation. NRC was the first organization to conceive of the idea of benchmarks and we're very proud of them. And there are currently 500 communities in our benchmark database. You're in great company. The highest performing local governments get regular feedback from the residents and consider measurement essential for improvement. As such, it's good to note that you're not being compared to every town or every city, but you're being really compared to the best-run cities. This is a list of the other Massachusetts communities in our database. Western, Somerset, Shrewsbury, Needham, Natick, Hoptonkin, Brookline, Ashland, Andover, and Bedford. Is that Butcherum?
You didn't say Butcher.
I am from Colorado. By way of Canada. Just on to the results. A bit of context for the presentation charts. The questions were asked on a four-point scale where the respondent could answer excellent, good, fair, or poor. But for the ease of the presentation and comparison, only the percent positive are shown here. That's excellent or good. We also note the comparison to the national benchmark with shading on the bars. And in future years, if you continue this, you will also have a trend line, benchmarking against yourself, which is probably the most important benchmark. In the survey, we have two questions that ask directly about the 10 facets of community livability. And here you can see that the ratings for the quality of each of those facets. Here we see safety is your highest rating and it is well above the benchmark. The second question asks about the same facets, but is centered on how important residents think it is for the community to focus on them for the coming two years. We ask about both quality and importance of each of the facets and we use those answers to create Quality Importance Matrix or gap chart, which we'll see on the next slide. So, this chart, which is also included in your report, is one of many ways to interpret your data. It can be used to help a community determine which areas may need additional policy focus or resource allocation in coming years and which are performing well by comparison. It shows which areas are of relatively higher importance and lower quality to residents. And so, here you can see economy has the largest gap and should potentially be a focus of attention. Utilities, health and wellness, and mobility have moderate gaps. Moving on now to highlights of our findings. There's a lot of additional data in the report that we're not going to cover today, but today's president's just focused, presentation focuses on a few areas that we found most noteworthy as survey researchers. So, first, Franklin's residents have a great quality of life. Nearly all residents rated fire services in Franklin positively, with 94% describing them as excellent or good. And, you know, I think the chief has something to do with that, so it was lovely to meet him today. Ambulance and emergency medical services also received 94% positive ratings. And about nine in 10 residents expressed satisfaction with crime prevention efforts, which was higher than the benchmark. Similarly, 90% gave favorable ratings to police and sheriff services. Oh, did I? Oh, sorry. Oh. Oh, I get right to safety. Oh, well, let me look up here.
Let's do this one.
Yeah. Okay, so about eight in 10 residents gave excellent or good ratings to Franklin as a place to live, Franklin as a place to retire, and the overall image or reputation of Franklin. And most plan to stay, remain in the community for five years and would recommend others to come to Franklin. Oh, now we're back to safety. Sorry. So, most residents... Most residents feel very safe in Franklin. You can see that safety from violent crime and property crime are above the benchmark. And that's actually quite uncommon. Most safety ratings are around the benchmark or lower. And then, as I said earlier, the fire services received excellent marks, as did crime prevention, police services, and ambulance services. Economic health is important to every community and there are some areas here to look closer. Nearly eight in 10 residents rated the overall quality of business and services establishments positively. About three-quarters expressed satisfaction with Franklin as a place to work, while two-thirds gave Franklin favorable ratings for the variety of businesses and service establishments. Roughly six in 10 viewed Franklin positively as a place to visit. Half of respondents were satisfied with the vibrancy of downtown and commercial areas, and just under half gave favorable ratings for employment opportunities. About three in 10 rated the cost of living positively. These were all on par with the national benchmarks. Important areas to watch, but common across the country. Franklin residents gave good marks to the natural environment. Shown on an earlier side, residents gave high-quality ratings, 84% of residents gave high-quality ratings to the overall quality of the natural environment. Nine in 10 residents rated air quality in Franklin positively. 84% were happy with recycling services, which was also above the benchmark. 70% of residents gave favorable ratings to yard waste pickup, while 68% were pleased with Franklin's open space. Two-thirds of residents gave good marks to the preservation of natural areas and water resources, which were similar to the benchmark. Populous regions usually face transportation network challenges and from the Quality Important Matrix, we noticed the moderate gap for mobility. This is more of a yellow than a red flag, but maybe an area to explore. Residents rated the ease of travel by car the highest amongst mobility options in Franklin, with 72% marking it as excellent or good. This was followed by ease of walking at 67% and ease of public parking at 58%. Traffic flow on major streets received slightly lower ratings at 51%. Ratings were notably lower for ease of travel by bicycle and ease of travel by public transportation, but again, all on par with the national benchmark. Franklin residents rated snow removal with 82% describing it as excellent or good. Both traffic enforcement and street cleaning received 68% positive ratings. Street lighting and sidewalk maintenance were rated slightly lower, each at 62%. All were, again, near the benchmark. Governance ratings are also on par with the nation amid a national trend of declining governance... Amid a national trend of declining government governance items, almost all items related to Franklin's government performance obtained ratings similar to the benchmarks. Treating residents fairly and with respect while welcoming their involvement topped the list. Rated slightly below the benchmark was the overall direction Franklin is taking. It will might will be an important to consider, continue engagement with residents to understand that perception. That those that summarizes, quickly summarizes the National Community Survey benchmark, benchmarking questions. And Franklin also included a few custom questions on the survey to get some direction on a few unique topics. So first of all, affordability ranked as the highest housing priority, with sixty-five percent of residents identifying it as a high priority for future housing development. Sustainability and environmental impact were also important to residents, with fifty-five percent rating it a high priority and thirty-four percent a medium. Preserving the town's unique character and sense of community followed closely behind, with fifty-two percent seeing it as a high priority and thirty-seven percent as a medium priority. So all were pretty important. Considering future development in Franklin, single-family homes were the top choice, with eighty-two percent of residents indicating a higher medium priority. Fifty-five, housing for fifty-five-plus people were followed with sixty-four percent. Condominiums were desired by fifty-one percent, and multiple family units by five forty-five percent. Accessory dwelling units were the lowest priority amongst the options. Public schools also received good ratings. About eight in ten residents had excellent or good ratings for the maintenance of building facilities and the overall image and reputation for Franklin Public Schools. Roughly seven in ten members positively rated student preparedness for post-secondary education and the overall quality of pre-K educational experience. A variety, the variety of extracurricular and curricular activities received good ratings from sixty-nine percent. And again, we had a beautiful example of it tonight. So overall, Franklin is a great place to live. People feel safe and they love the area. Like many communities, there are some transportation challenges. And like most places in the U.S., there are some economic concerns. Residents gave good marks to the leadership, and in bringing their voices into the picture, you are well set to move the community forward with your residents.
So I'm gonna do a little bit of a deeper dive. And I know some of this is going to be repetitive, using some of the same data, obviously, that Sonya is talking about, and they're on the same slides, but I'm just gonna, we're gonna talk about it a little bit more. But I know that it's a lot of numbers and a lot of information, so I will keep it as quick as I can. So initial thoughts, I know this was mentioned, but we had a really exceptional response rate. And I sat here seven months ago, and I think I told you that I'd be happy with five hundred responses, and we got double that. So for any residents in the audience or at home watching, I just, it was incredible and they did a phenomenal job and I, good job residents for participating. It was phenomenal. I do want you to all consider the timing of this, that it was in January and February, and just kind of keep that reference in mind as to where we were in January and February as what was happening. So this provides a real snapshot of that time, of people's feelings, their opinions, and what they were going through at that moment. So it creates a really good baseline for us to measure in the future. And I know that Jamie's talked about this already, but this creates a really good starting point. If we want to do this again in five years or in six years, or we'll have a place to start that we can compare where we are moving. If you can't get an accurate, I know I'm the data person, but you can't get an accurate picture if you don't have the data. So this is a wonderful, it's a plethora of data. It overwhelmingly shows a really high quality of life for the folks that live in Franklin. There's a lot of support for town services. There is obviously splits of opinions that show up in the data, which is what we see in our region, across the Commonwealth, across the country. Franklin's not unique in that sense. We're also New Englanders and we love to banter with each other. I say that as a born and raised New Englander. Also, it's very apparent that residents of Franklin share all the same frustrations that everyone across this country shares. We all have concerns about access and affordability to mental health care, childcare, housing costs, just the general cost of living, trust in government, development, transportation, the natural environment, where we're going. Everyone's got anxiety about it, and it's something that's on everybody's mind.
Not me. I'm retiring. I see a lot.
He's moving to North Frank.
I know that Sonya mentioned this, but when you see the numbers, unless I've delineated it out, it is the excellent or good rating. A really important piece of information, I think, that deserves a slide, all its own, is that ninety-nine percent of residents, this is one that I'm splitting out, obviously, have felt the overall quality of life in Franklin was excellent, good, or fair. That's one percent that thought that Franklin, that life in Franklin was poor. I think that speaks volumes, that people are happy in Franklin. Eighty-eight percent felt that Franklin was a good place to live. Eighty-four recommend living in Franklin. Eighty-three percent want to remain in Franklin for the next five years, and the overall reputation of Franklin was eighty percent. So it's a high quality of, of life in Franklin. With any organization, there's always room for improvement, investment, places where people want to spend money, want to focus attention. And I, this is a very brief overview, I'm gonna go through each piece individually. So one facet to look at is communication, transparency, and honesty. Thirty-eight percent of Franklin are not, are are happy with the direction that Franklin is taking. Forty-two percent have an overall confidence in the Franklin government, and forty-two percent have a good or excellent view of being open and transparent. One piece that I think is really interesting that came out in the survey is that nineteen percent of respondents campaigned or advocated for a local issue, cause, or candidate. That speaks volumes, I think, and is not a unique problem to Franklin, is how do we get our residents to want to engage more? Engagement is what makes a community run, and it's how we come together as a community. So that's something that we can look at and have a lot of conversations about, of how do we increase that? Information is there. Our town website is packed with information, meeting agendas, planning documents from the planning board, budget information. It's, it's all there. How do we make it more accessible? How do we make it more consumable? It's, it's a lot, and that's something else we can look at, is how do we, how do we make that easier to consume for our residents? This was really interesting to me. I'm gonna say that probably on every single slide, sorry. That nine out of ten residents responded positively as to the neighborhood that they live in, and it's a positive place to live. You break that down one more level, and only twenty-five percent were happy about the affordability, the availability of affordable housing. Thirty-two percent with land use planning and zoning. Thirty-five percent with well-planned residential growth. People love where they live. They've chosen their neighborhood and they love it, and they're very happy. And it's the other part of the community that they have different feelings of. And maybe you live downtown, you like a more urban area. Maybe you live in northern Franklin and you want a little bit more tree coverage and, you know, access to a park right next to you or a recreation area. So you're happy where you are, but there's other pieces to think about and consider with the way that Franklin's growing and where it's moving. Mobility, mobility and the economy, we'll start with the, with mobility. Forty-four percent of the respondents were happy with the overall condition of roadways and street repairs. My office is the DPW, so this does not surprise me. I understand. We all want better roads. Forty-two percent ease of travel and public transportation, fifty-five is the overall economic health of Franklin. The economy portion, I think, is interesting because, again, that's a local economy, there's the economy across the Commonwealth, there's the national economy, there's a lot of layers to look at. It's a sentiment shared by many people across this entire country. And recently, over the last few months, there's been a lot of articles written, a lot of additional surveys that have been put out by Suffolk University, by the UNH Survey Center. There's a lot of anxiety about the economy, and that I don't think comes to a surprise to anybody. But it is something very much to keep in mind in the future. It's incredible as to how loved Franklin is by its residents. Again, and I know this, I love this as repeated information, but I do think it bears repeating. Eighty percent of respondents plan to remain in Franklin for five years and would recommend living in Franklin. Ninety-four percent, that's overwhelmingly feel that Franklin is a very safe place to live. Eighty-four percent love the natural environment. Ninety-one percent air quality, eighty-eight cleanliness, eighty-four recycling. The fact that that's above the national average is wonderful. Our recycling center is clearly very loved. They have a ton of services up there, so it's an excellent resource for the residents of Franklin. There's a lot of pride. Franklin has a very rich history. Education, there's a seventy-six percent overall image of Frank, positive overall image of Franklin's schools. Seventy-seven percent in student preparedness, seventy-five percent in overall pre-K educational experience. The education system here is very well thought of. There's a desire for more investment in it, but it has a wonderful reputation and people love our school system. A ninety-six percent excellent or good opinion of Franklin's library is, again, Franklin, everybody knows we have a very rich and deep-seated history in Franklin revolving around libraries, and our library is a gem in the community and is very well-loved. So Felicia, over here.
She's smiling.
Eighty-seven percent feel that Franklin is a greater, excellent place to raise children. There's an overwhelmingly positive sense of community and a welcoming community. This, we had a, as Sonya mentioned, we had an opportunity to have custom questions. We didn't have a lot of them, so I'm literally gonna go through each one. We had a ninety-six percent rate of custom current response time for fire and emergency medical services. Thirty-eight percent, this is a shout-out to Franklin TV, thirty-eight percent of residents watched a local public meeting online or on television, which is higher than the national average. So that's, that's great. So great job for Zoom and all, all, all the YouTube videos, so nice job Franklin TV. Sixty-seven percent of residents utilize the town's online payment system for billing, permitting, and licensing. That's a great stat. I'm heavily involved in the permitting and licensing system, so I'm already thinking about ways I can kind of bump that number up a little bit. One thing we did really want to look at and kind of take a dive into was the percentage or where people are getting their information and how they're consuming it. Sixty-three percent of residents got their news from, that was either digital or social media, which, that is fascinating to me. I mean, ten years ago, it was probably pretty high, but can you imagine thirty years ago? And like, you'd get your news from the newspaper or the five o'clock local news and then six-thirty the national news, and that's just not usually the way people are consuming media anymore. So the primary source, I wanted to break it down more than just the digital news. Digital news, thirty-eight percent, social media, twenty-five percent. That's a big number, which I don't think is a surprise to many. Television, nineteen percent. Newspapers, down to ten percent. Sources of social media, again, I don't think this is going to surprise anybody either, but Facebook is twenty-nine percent, followed by Instagram at thirteen, Twitter at four-point four, Blue Sky at two-point-two, TikTok, two-point-two. A lot of folks get information podcasts as well. These, this is a duplicate of one of Sonya's slides, but I did break down the visual a little bit more. I grouped high and medium priority together with the low to not priority on where the town's priorities should be when planning for future housing developments. And it just gives a different kind of view of the data. Sustainability and environmental impact, preserving the town's unique character, and the traffic management and transportation options are at the top. And I do think it's important to note that these priorities are mirrored in the master plan. So that's right on track. What types of housing? Again, I broke it down to separate the high and the low. I think single-family, fifty-five-plus, and condos were top. School questions. Eighty-four percent of the respondents felt that it was essential or very important for the Franklin community to focus on providing overall opportunities for education in the upcoming two years. So that's where you see the Franklin schools are loved. Folks still want more attention for the schools and more investment into that. This is, again, I'm sorry, this is another very interesting statistic. The question of have you attended a school committee meeting in the last twelve months? Eighty-two percent said no. So that's another piece there, like, how, how do we do that? How do we get our residents to engage? And I feel like that's, you know, an age-old question for local governments. Ratings for the various aspects of public schools. Again, this was on one of Sonya's slides. Maintenance of building facilities, overall image reputation, the student preparedness for post-secondary education, variety of extracurricular and curricular activities, quality of pre-K education experience. They're all hot ranked excellent or good, quite high. So again, the schools are loved, and good quality education comes from them. This is a level of support for the current education program services, whether they should be reduced, maintained, or increased. This is pretty, you know, obvious that either the, the current programming and services should either be maintained or increased. People obviously strongly support that. Everyone wants to support our schools and have as strong schools as we can. So it's a lot of information, and what does it all mean? It means that there's a division within the town and where Franklin's going. That's not uncommon. That's, that's how most people feel. You're never going to get everybody to agree on everything. It's really important that everybody be heard, that people are able to voice their opinions, which is where we get that community engagement. We want folks to be as involved as they possibly can, because there are, there's always going to be conflicting opinions. That's just, we're humans, that's how humans are. We have that innate desire to discuss and debate. It's part of who we are. The real challenge, we have a lot of modern challenges that now play a part. There's social media, there's a lot of persistent inaccurate information, there can be a lack of civility over social media. That happens all the time, from a teenager to a senior citizen. It happens across the board. There is just an absolute need to increase civic engagement, and how do, how do we do that? The information's available, how do we help people find it? How do we help people understand it and consume it? I know there's been discussions at the June fourth meeting about continuing the budget, the subcommittee meetings, and that's a phenomenal way to, I know it's, it's a lot of time for a lot of folks, it's a great way to keep those conversations moving and to allow opportunities for more conversations. So final thought, Franklin is divided, but there is an overwhelming common thread between everyone in Franklin, and that's that they love Franklin. Like, people love living here and they love being part of the Franklin community. And I think that that is a huge piece to really take with us, to know that there's gonna be disagreements, but people love being here and they feel very close to each other. Franklin is a wonderful place to live, it has a very high quality of life, high quality of services provided by the town, customer service. So we have a tremendous amount of support from residents that, that love Franklin and think it's a great place to live. And Sonya's gonna talk more about what our next steps might be.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a few things when you're looking to keep engaged with residents. So as part of the Polco program that you are all part of now, is that you can, can continue to engage with your residents on Polco. We have, so we have a survey tool that this, that your National Community Survey was posted on, and you're free to continue to, to use that. It is sort of, it's like, I guess, you could say a survey monkey or something like that, but it'll meant for the local government specifically. And as part of that, you can have residents, you can ask residents to subscribe to it, to continue to be engaged. So right now, there's a hundred and thirty-one residents who have subscribed, and so you can continue to put out short polls or surveys to follow up on these, like, if departments want to dig a little deeper into their results and what people were thinking when they rated something high or low, or what they're concerned about in the economy, or just to get a little bit more background. We, our survey experts have created hundreds of short surveys that, for local governments, that you can just kind of take off the shelf, modify in a way you want, and then quickly get some more in. get some more input. And so that is included, and we just, you know, we also have staff that can help get that, get the work, you know, help with outreach plan and creating a survey if some, one of the things in the library isn't working for you. And then additionally, we also have a bunch of other data in Polco about Franklin. So we have culled data from, I think about forty different public data sources, and we've benchmarked it for all basically city places or place, census places across the U.S. So Franklin, of course, is included in that. So there are, including your NCS data, there are about four hundred data points that are based on that, that, on those ten facets of livability, and they're all benchmarked, they all have time trends, and so you can kind of go in and look at like economy, drill down and see all the economic indicators that we've created for you guys. So that is also included and just provides another bit of context when you're digging into, for policy planning or just trying to think about performance measurement and where you're at and what needs you might have. And then the final thing is we have in, so the National Community Survey, we do have some other surveys that we do, a business survey, an employee survey, an older adult survey, but, and, and also some simulations for budget simulations, if you like, would like to give your community an opportunity to try and balance their own budget. It's a very interesting way to engage residents. It's a, it's a, it can be a very meaningful experience to try and see what kind of trade-offs you guys have to make, you know? And it's truly like, if you want to add this, you've got to minus something else. You've got to like, figure it all out. And then if you do that, we also have taxpayer receipts, so you can actually see how all the taxes are being used. So a person can kind of put in what their income is and see what they are paying for things in Franklin, which I think is a great way to kind of close the loop on, like, on transparency cycle. So that was a lot.
Sonia, thank you very much. Kate, thank you very much, and I'll look to the council for questions. Counselor Frangello.
Yeah, thank you. A lot of good stuff here. Few questions in, in no particular order. The national benchmark, we kept going on the national benchmark. Is there somewhere where you've laid out what that's defined as? Is that just the average across all your communities? Is there larger? And then also, like, what's the margin that says something similar versus more or below?
So it is the average of the communities, so of the five hundred communities, it's usually five hundred, depending on a couple of questions. Fewer, quick, some communities might not ask, so it might be a fewer or less than that, like snow removal in Florida. But, and then basically, it's, it's, if you're within tempers, ten points of the...
Ten points, okay. That's, that's pretty wide, ten points in either direction. Similar, okay, great. I'm assuming we have data on who actually responded? Do you happen to, no, you said that you had done some, you know, right sizing?
Statistical re, like, reweighting?
Yeah. Do you happen to remember what the response rates were? Did we get sufficient response rates, you know, sample sizes for some of those harder to reach, you know, traditionally harder to reach populations to, to do the weighting that we wanted to do?
I don't know them completely offhand, but yeah, when, when you have a thousand respondents or nine-hundred-and-seventy-three, you do, you have enough to, to weight the, the smaller demographics to their proper proportions.
Okay. And were we able to do crosscuts, see?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So if you, we have, actually, you can, online, our online reports.
Yeah.
You can go and take any question by any demographic and see the cross tabs, and it'll show you if they're statistically different.
Awesome, we have access to that?
That's the Tableau report.
That's the Tableau report.
Yeah, so if you go onto the NCS website, there's a link to it. I think I called it the, the interactive report.
Beautiful.
Yeah, because there's so much in terms of that cross tabs, and the online interactivity is really helpful.
You'll have fun taking through that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of information.
Okay, so then if you're being, do we have access to the, to all the raw data?
Yes, the, the raw data is available. Any info, so we were advised by Polco to remove some of the potentially like...
Anything that's personally identifiable gets removed?
Yes.
But like, if you wanted a raw data set, you can have access to that?
Yes, they're also linked on the website.
Having said that, because it's weighted, if you're, you know, the statistical weighting is somewhat complex, so to use like an Excel file or something like that, you have to, you know, you would get different results if you didn't statistically weight it, basically. But there's a lot of information just on that Tableau report with a lot of dropdowns and cross tabs, so most people find that helpful.
It's very user-friendly, the Tableau report.
Awesome, yeah, there's more to say than if, if, hopefully not, but if Polco ever, you know, wasn't around, that we would still be able to have the data that we needed and potentially be able to continue this. Okay. Yeah, okay, and then we do this, this is going, all right, and raw data question. All right, and then I noticed that all of your, none of your questions, they were all like asking people about their experiences in town, they weren't asking people to prescribe policy solutions. Is there a reason that that?
Yeah, this is really a needs assessment, so we want to see which areas you're doing well in, which areas are concerned. There are some questions that are about like what's important to residents, but it's not, we're not asking them to prescribe like a solution, I guess, if that's...
Yeah.
And I would say that like, sort of the follow-up surveys are probably a better place for that, because that often is really good for, you know, open-ended questions as well. And, and so it's just easier interactivity.
And so to make it clear, the one question that did ask for policy solutions around housing that was not designed by your team?
It was designed by our team, but it's not, I guess, it's not the National Community Survey question, and it was a custom question that, yes, was designed by my team.
Yeah, I, I voiced it in going out in the survey. I was frustrated with that question. I think that it's, was poorly designed and not a, a proper way to do policy analysis within a community, and I was, I found much more value in people naming the importance of environmental conservation, addressing traffic congestion, housing affordability, and downtown vibrancy than attempting on little information and a poor set of questions, what their preferred housing type is in Franklin. So that was my, my largest frustration there, but really appreciate all the information and your willingness to come and speak directly with us.
Of course.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Any other, Counselor Chandler?
Free, Mr. Chairman. Hi, ladies.
Hi.
Obviously, it's great to hear that our safety and quality of life is the most important, because all nine of us, everyone out here loves Franklin. We do, we love Franklin. The thing I just wanted to touch on quickly was the social media. Now, when you said Facebook was the highest, I would automatically think that it was a older survey group, but in this town, people are very active on Facebook. And you even said, what, twenty-one percent of the people here get their news from Facebook?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
From, from digital or social media.
Oh, I thought that was from Facebook, okay.
And she also then broke down what the digital and social media was, and the largest group was from, on Facebook.
On Facebook, yeah.
All right, and you had one question, that would people stay here five years or more? I, I didn't see this other one, but was it, was there anything after your kids graduate high school, would they leave or stay?
That was not a question.
Yeah, there's not a specificity about a time period.
It'd have to be a future survey.
Mm-hmm. You could also look, you know, when we're talking about how you can drill down by different demographics.
Yeah.
That would be one where you could look at, you would be looking at age ranges, probably. It wouldn't be exactly, or, or if people have children at home.
Yeah.
You could pull that off of that report that you were just talking about.
It wouldn't be exactly what you're talking about, but it could give you a...
Closer.
Closer, yeah.
Right, because that is the biggest age people filed for divorce, when their last kid goes to college.
Yeah.
Just so you know, you know that. Okay, and lastly, sorry.
It, it's true though, Brian.
Lastly, just to piggyback a little bit on Counselor Frangello, like, some of these school questions on like the staff, and this is page twenty-seven, but that's what I'm going off of. You know, would you cut or increase staff, or, you know, should staff be maintained? I just think, I don't under, these ones I don't always agree with here, because after the last two overrides have failed, it almost looks like people were almost afraid to say that they wanted to cut things, because you have, you know, strongly support four percent not cutting, and then oppose forty-eight. So I just, I don't agree with that page that much, but I appreciate everything else, all the other stuff you did. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sonia and Kate, great, I just had to say it, of course.
I thought you'd get through the whole night.
No. All the thorough and wonderful work that you do down at the BPW, I'm sorry you have to hear the road complaints.
That's part of the job. House will drive a lot of the road, so.
Yeah, that's true. First off, I wanted to thank all the hard, you know, everyone who put all their hard time and effort into making this certain, what appears to be a very thorough, detailed, unbiased, and non-slanted survey, and I'm surprised by the percentage that turned out, twenty percent. These are very good, this is very good information, and particularly happy about the fact that, you know, ninety-nine percent of, of the town is for all intents and purposes favorable. What's sad to hear, that one percent is poor, we have to hunt these people down and see if we can do it, put a smile on their face, maybe, maybe better communication, who knows? But I'm, I'm going to take some time to look over the survey and digest information and see what we can do as we start planning, A, towards, you know, next year's goals, as well as looking towards, you know, as I see here, the 250th anniversary celebration is coming up, we have a bunch of whole cool economic opportunities coming up with this, with the World Cup coming to the neighborhood, so we've got a lot to think about, this is a lot to think, to digest. My question in regards to the survey really boils down to, of those communities, are there, is there a comparable that we can generate or is generated that, say, for instance, compares Franklin to a peer town that's equal, say, thirty thousand people, same rough demographics within Massachusetts, or at least within the New England area, that would be able to apples and orange type of, or apples and apples kind of situation?
We, we never compare it to just one city or a town, but, but yeah, we can do custom, what we call, we call them custom benchmarks, where we can customize by region or population bands. Some get really, some people get really specific, like, I'm from Boulder, sometimes people want them like college towns, or something that like is unique to what their...
To our community.
Yeah, what you're, specific, yeah.
Not, not snow removal in Florida, that would be, that would be a bad thing. Plus, the housing is different down in Florida, too. Most of my family lives in the villages down in Florida.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting thing, I, I, you know, working with communities, like, there, I would say most communities in some ways are more like than difference, you know, you, this kind of services you need to provide, the structure and all of those things, so there's, they're comparable, and you can find best practices from communities all over the place, but yes, definitely, we can do customized benchmarks that look at more of a unique band.
Because I think ideally, at least from, you know, my perspective as the former Chair of Master Plan, is to kind of do a little compare and contrast, what is it that these communities do that is similar to us, and kind of look to see what type of policy changes they had potentially put in place in order to kind of improve on those areas, so that we can either emulate it or even come up with our own type of policies to hopefully improve the lower percentages on the survey. That's, that's just a general thought on my idea, that's why I was wondering if it was possible. Is it something you would do or something that was automatic to?
It's something that we would do, because it's, we would be...
Specific.
Yeah, we would specifically be calling, selecting specific communities. It's something we're actually trying to work on, to do actually on our platform, that you could, that the client could do themselves, but it's not there yet.
Okay.
It's in the roadmap.
I'll bring it up at a later date, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sonia and Kate, thank you very much for all this incredible information. One of the things I just want to say, people rated that Franklin is a great place to retire, right? So that kind of answers sort of Counselor Chandler's question about if you're going to stay after your kids leave high school, right? And I love the idea of build your own budget, like, that would be really kind of, it's like a SimCity kind of thing, but it's like the budget. And I found, I thought that the road quality, that people liked the roads, was actually high, so I guess it depends on, on how you look at it. I find, I find this, this community design page that you have here very interesting, that, that, where Kate mentioned how people love their, where they live. They love their neighborhood, but they might not like other people's neighborhoods so much, right? And what, and so, so there's things here that I, like, well-designed neighborhoods, like, I don't, well-planned commercial growth, well-planned residential growth, like, I don't really know, is this exactly how the question was stated in the survey? Or like, so I'm just wondering, like, well, if people say that they don't like, or that there's only thirty-five percent that rated residential growth that was well-planned as good or excellent, like, is that, like, I'm just asking how the question was kind of asked, I guess? Like, it was just like, do you think the...
So most of these questions are, you know, a grid list of things, so it's, you know, please relate Frank, or, you know, please rate...
Okay.
The following items in, in Franklin.
Right.
Is basically the, and then there's a list of things, so...
And so what you have here is the list?
Um, yes.
That was on the survey? I guess that's why, that's really my question.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. I, I think there's some very interesting data here, so it's pretty good. And I find that it's really amazing how similar we are to the benchmarks, and the availability of affordable, quality housing is only twenty-five percent, so, and it's the same all over.
It is the same all over.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Delaco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your survey, that was, that was good, but I know that you, I want to talk a little bit about, like you said, how the town is divided. We obviously know that the town is divided, we all do, all nine, all, well, nine of us, even the nine of us here all know that. I know you said, oh, having the subcommittee report, they're all good, but even here, it's the same people all the time. It's, it's the same people that come to the subcommittee meetings, it's the same people that come here. We got to find a way, and the only way I know is for people to get out there, because they're not going to come to us, we got to go to them. It's the only way we can get them, because I know that the communities, I mean, I've been on this council fourteen years, I can get a phone call from somebody that said, are you still on the council? I voted for you. You probably did, since years ago. You, you, you know what I mean? So I mean, even I see that, you, you know what I'm saying? It is way, way divided, and, and we do have to find a way to, to get the community more involved, and I'll help any way I can, but I, I, I know it's really frustrating for everybody, and everybody that's here, you know? So I just wanted to bring that up, but I know you guys are doing a great job, it's nobody's fault.
You're best. Well, that's, that's the thing, it's, it's, it's not, I mean, people, we, everyone has their own unique experience in life, and I think the best way to continue having a positive and fruitful community is to have empathy and to be curious and not judgmental, and I think the best way to do that is to ask questions. Why do you feel that way? What could happen that could maybe make something better? Tell me about an experience you had that makes you feel that way. I mean, it's, it's, it's a challenge that...
Nobody has an open mind anymore, it's tunnel-digged, this is what they got, and nobody wants to, nobody wants to work with anybody to help, and it is getting frustrating for a lot of us that have been here for a long time, you know, it really is. I do agree with you, Brian, though, because Brian's kids and my kids are kind of all graduating around the same time, and we've had a lot of friends that have just either got... got divorced or just moved out of Franklin because they, you know, that's why Brian said that, so I want to back him up. But thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Delarco. Any other councilors?
Just quickly, for what it's worth, the demographic comparisons on the public tableau don't seem to be active. Uh, the ability to break down, just doesn't seem to be loading or everything else.
Are you getting an error message or is it just not?
Just blank, yeah, not, it just isn't responsive. It actually says Telluride is a, brings, has a place to live, and then sort of doesn't fill in the blank, so.
It says what?
Telluride.
Telluride, as another community, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it's a place in Colorado, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm assuming that that park just hasn't-
It's a beautiful place.
It's a nice place to visit.
It's a Switzerland, it's a Swiss, it's a Swiss. Uh, yeah, I would, yeah.
If we can read it.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll make sure it's working, that's not good news.
Any other questions from councilors? I guess the only thing I might add to piggyback on Councilor Delarco, uh, I think we, this council has done a good job in the last year of trying to get as much information out as we possibly can to as many residents as we could at the time. Uh, it's still very concerning to me that the numbers is, and I know you were happy with the nine hundred and seventy-three. We have thirty-four thousand people, twenty-four thousand voters in town. How do we get to more of them? And I think, again, to piggyback on Councilor Delarco, it's really up to us to go to them. And what are the tools we can have to get out to them with factual information? Uh, cause I'd, I'd love to see that nine hundred and seventy-three be, you know, four thousand of the five thousand, uh, that you send out.
I will say, in terms of just the statistical survey, it's probably not gonna be that, just because it's, you know, not in this case, but-
I, I get that.
And the nine hundred and seventy-three is quite remarkable and excellent for this effort, but in terms of getting around to everyone for just the purpose of engagement, absolutely you want to hear from everyone that you can.
I guess I'm just not easily satisfied. Uh, I, I look for more, I look for more, but uh, I also look for more ways to get to more of the community. Uh, you have public meetings, you, uh, you know, you spoke about the Joint Budget Subcommittee that, uh, met for six months, uh, on a regular basis in different parts of the community, trying to engage as much information or questions and trying to get factual information to the community. And what are other ways, how else can we do it? Uh, you know, we got to a lot this year, but we need to continue to strive to get to more. And what are those, and we're open, I know every one of the councilors is saying, hey, you want some information, we'll help you get it. Reach out to us. Uh, help us help you get the facts to make informed decisions as we move forward. So, uh, I know I sound a little frustrated, but I, I, it's just, uh, wanting to get more information to the public. In fact, I was almost, I was almost a little surprised that on the different ways of getting news, that there wasn't a percentage for the coffee shop. Counselor Delarco did ask.
I did ask. Well, there should be, honey, do you stay west?
Uh, so, but again, uh, you know, and I, I know it's our job, uh, it's what we get elected to do, and what we need to continue to do is reaching out to the people, uh, trying to get out to the residents as much information, factual information, because as we've all alluded to, sometimes what's, what's on Facebook isn't fact, sometimes. Uh, and that's a frustrating part for us, uh, as we know that that's not fact, but how do you get them the right information? So, with that, I'll go to the audience, and I was sure that Steve would raise his hand, so.
Thank you. Steve Sherlock, thirteen Magnolia, Community Information Director for Franklin Matters, Franklin Public Radio. Um, quick comment, at least in regards to, I like the thirty-eight percent, but it doesn't really necessarily jive, cause if you remember earlier this year, we did our own unofficial survey, and half the people don't even know we have a TV station, never mind a radio station. So thirty-eight percent watching a meeting, that's impressive. Um, the key question for me, and there's a lot of data, it's gonna take some time to filter through and make some sense of it, key question for me is what's next? It sounds like this certainly is the benchmark. Are we truly gonna get another survey in a year, two years? What's next?
And to your point, Steve, I think this was a starting point, and we looked at it as a starting point, uh, and it was nice that it was funded outside of the budget. We, uh, obviously know with the budget shortfalls, there's not a lot of money to be going out doing surveys. So, uh, I do think that this is a start, I do think we need time to digest, uh, a lot of this report, cause there's a lot of information in there, and I think I would just look to Jamie and say, maybe in the, yeah, I know our agendas, our agendas are full for the next couple of months, but maybe in the fall, September or October, we bring him back in and we talk a little further about some of the information that we've been able to gather through the survey, and maybe at that juncture, we talk about, you know, what is the best timeframe? To answer your question, Steve, uh, is it one year, is it two years, is it three, is it five, is it seven, is it ten? Uh, what is the right year, number of years before you go out again? Or maybe it's just the state of the economy, what's the economy like in two years that might drive you to another survey? Uh, so, uh, I know that's not a definitive answer, but at least, uh, hopefully it gives you a little bit of insight as to where we're going.
Yeah, could I, could, just to his first point, I, I do think that that, you know, I had the same reaction to like thirty-eight percent are, are watching these and, you know, the amount, and in general, if twenty percent of people are responding, those are more likely to be the people that are most engaged with, uh, the government and, uh, what's going on. And to me, I see those maybe less indicative of the town as a whole, and maybe more indicative of the response bias that we might have received in terms of, oh, it seems like the people who are more likely to respond to surveys are those that are more likely to be showing up to meetings and, um, watching TV.
Totally agree.
Thank you, Councilor Frank Gill. Is there anyone else in council chambers that has a question or a comment? Mark, name and address, please.
Mark Minnicali, thirty-one Longfellow Drive. So, um, I, I have, I enjoyed the, seeing the results, and I have a question. Um, at the very beginning of your presentation, you talked about the statistical survey and then the, the additional survey that was done for those who wanted to give feedback. How would you recommend we use that information?
So-
The second, the second piece.
The second, yeah, the, we call it open participation survey because it's open for anyone to participate. Um, we generally look at it, um, for over, we, we look at it as those people are generally the people who are even more, even more so engaged. I would absolutely agree that any survey, that you're still getting a more engaged public. It's probably not all the people who go to meetings, it's like, but it's that next layer of people who are a little bit more engaged and don't have time maybe to go to a meeting. So it is, um, a little more represent, it's more representative, but, um, the open participation, because it's from community outreach from the city, is likely people who are even more engaged.
So how would you recommend we use that?
So, I generally look at it as, uh, the, well, the survey on the tableau report, you can look at the results, you can compare the two, and you can think through like, is there a, a more actively engaged group and what do they think? Do they have a different opinion than the general population? So I think one of the things that surveys can often do, the statistically sampled surveys, if you have, if you feel like there are certain loud voices in the community, you can check to see, like, are those loud voices representative of, like, who are they representative? Are they representative of the community as a whole? Are they representative of- The person. -or a smaller group of people? So I think it's just another way to check and see, like, what are you hearing, do you have differential response, basically?
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Anyone else in council chambers have a question or a comment? Is there anyone out there in Zoom land that has a question or a comment? I don't see anybody, do you? Okay. Kate, Sonia, thank you very much. Uh, great presentation.
Thank you.
And thank you for all the work that went into it, for sure. Okay, next item on the agenda is legislation for action. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight, Establishment of Franklin's Two Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration Committee, sorry. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight, Establishment of Franklin's Two Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration Committee. Whereas the town, town council desires to establish a Two Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration Committee to plan, organize, and carry out events and activities pertaining to the Franklin's Two Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration, which shall be held throughout the town's semi-quinsential, say that out really fast, semi-quinsential year, twenty-twenty-eight. Now therefore, the Franklin Town Council hereby establishes the Two Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration Committee as follows. One, town council has determined to appoint no more than thirteen members of the Two Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Celebration Committee, including the following representation and nomination. Selection criteria, A, member of the cultural district committee, B, member of the cultural council, C, member of historical commission, D, member of the library board of directors, E, member of the dean college organization, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, and M, or all at-large Franklin residents. Two, all thirteen voting members of the committee will be appointed by the town administrator and ratified by the town council. The, the one member of the cultural district committee, one member of the cultural council, one member of the historical commission, one member of the library board of directors will be recommended to the town administrator by the chair of each representative committee. Uh, the one member of dean college organization will be recommended to the town administrator by the president or the interim president of dean college. Uh, the eight at-large Franklin resident members will be selected to the town standard volunteer application process, and the chair of the town council shall select the chair, vice chair, clerk, and treasurer of the committee. Town administrator shall appoint five ex officios, non-voting staff members, to the committee. Uh, terms of the committee members shall end on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-nine. Duties of the committee are as follows. A, engage town boards, committees, and departments for input, ideas, and coordination of the year-long celebration. B, plan and reach program for events, activities, and information throughout the year, recognizing Franklin's past, present, and future. Engaging all citizenry and businesses in a celebratory, collaborative, and unified manner. Create a town-wide calendar and communication strategy to ensure information relating to committee programs and activities are accessible to the public. Plan and implement fundraising activities in accordance of Master and Law Chapter fifty-three, Section fifty-three I, and this resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of Town of Franklin, on move, sir.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion, Jamie.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, this is another one, both of these last two things have been goals for the council for this year, so we're checking off a couple more boxes. Um, this is a first draft, um, of it. We did do some research on some current, um, anniversary committees that have been around the area. Rentham had their three-fiftieth, I think. Mansfield is right, currently in their two-fiftieth. Um, I will say, when I was, uh, lucky enough, when I worked in Hopkinton, I, one of the projects I managed was managing the three-hundredth anniversary. Um, and so we did some, Julie and Amy and Jared did some research on some different things, um, and we put this out there as kind of a first draft to get an idea. I would say that, um, you know, I think from an engagement standpoint, you know, trying to put some identified groups that may be related to this, uh, does engage those committees and those volunteers. Um, and, and we talked about the dean college one, Mr. Chairman, just, you know, they're very integral despite the issues people may have on the day-to-day and parking and stuff, but in all sincerity and seriousness, dean college has been here for a hundred and fifty years, they're an integral part, there's a national district that revolves around dean, uh, junior college, I think it was named at the time. Um, I do want to be clear about one thing, um, how the council decides to make the appointments or who or how is far less important than who gets appointed. And the way that that, the way I mean that is, the committee itself has to be people that are willing to do the work. Um, I can tell you, and I shared this with you, when I was in Hopkinton, they appointed around first of nineteen members, this was ten years ago, of nineteen members, um, and it was all about kind of who was the most knowledgeable, who had the most history, and things of this sort, and it was kind of a big to-do. Um, within a handful of months, the entire committee resigned because they just got into a lot of fights about who was most knowledgeable, who was more important, who was gonna do the marathon exhibits, and Hopkinton was a big deal, there was a lot of people involved in all that, who had the most history, who had the most, and, and eighteen of the nineteen people resigned, there was one person left. Uh, that individual ended up becoming the chair of the committee and worked with me hand in hand through it, and I can tell you, it is an enormous amount of work. This is something that you should put time and effort into, this is a huge anniversary for the community. It's only two and a half years away, that is not a lot of time. Hopkinton did theirs, I think, four or five years in advance. Plymouth was a long time in advance for their four-hundredth, and they missed it because of COVID, or a part of it. Um, you know, um, I also want to make sure I'm clear, the committee needs to define the level of work. If a community committee wants to do fireworks and a couple of, you know, historical seminars, that's okay. It's okay. Um, but if people want to do a family day, or they want to do a fall weekend, or if they want to do a huge celebration on the birthday in March, that's in the middle of winter, there are a lot of decisions to make. Time capsule, I mean, there's all sorts of stuff. In the research we've done too, has provided a ton of those examples, Amy's included them in the memo. Uh, so I just want to make sure that we don't get, in my opinion at least, we don't get too deep into how many, how the, we just need to make sure that the right people apply that are willing to do the work and be collaborative and open-minded and comprehensive, and making sure that all those voices are heard, it is incredibly important. And I will tell you from my experience in Hopkinton, if you do it that way, it'll be one of the best years of your life. You will never forget it forever, you will always be proud of it, and people fifty years, a hundred years from now will look back on that, and they'll see photos on your wall out here, like I know in the Hopkinton Town Hall, there's photos of the fireworks celebration, the kids having fun throughout the entire year. It's something you'll be very, very proud of if it's done right, so. Um, we're open to suggestions and ideas, and I did, uh, Amy came up with a great idea, um, there are gonna be about five town staff as ex officio members, volunteers, um, Amy included, that are gonna help assist the committee. Um, the staff are not gonna do the work on behalf of the committee, we are there to assist, so I thought that was a great idea, so we, um, added that into the charge as well. So, um, certainly open to ideas and amendments, and if, if the council also wants to get feedback, we can, um, go back to the table and, and, you know, have it on a future agenda, or we can approve it in some iteration, see. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Councilor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, based on my experiences with the master plan and having a thirteen-member committee, um, one of the things that became resoundingly challenging is, A, setting how many meetings are going to be, setting a goal, setting up a clear goal for everybody to meet, uh, and ultimately, you know, kind of working with the council and the, and the town administration on, uh, setting a schedule. And in having that schedule, something that the thirteen members can meet, that was one of the biggest challenges, which is why I think I'd like to suggest dropping into a one people instead of thirteen. And I, I, I like the idea of the five ex officios, but I think we should add in a liaison to the council, so that somebody from the council-
That would be, they would be an at-large member.
Right, but I mean, one of-
We would put-
One of the council members would be a liaison to the committee so that they, that, that chair-
that chair of that would be directly reporting to somebody who would give us a report to the council.
Yeah, certainly, you know, eleven could work. The reason we came up with thirteen was mainly because the amount of work that's going to be needed to be done, you need the people to do it. And I know this is a little bit different than that, than the master plan committee. We are two and a half years out, just getting going. I do take your point about a liaison with the council. But I would look for a counselor to be on the committee in one way, shape, or form, as an at-large member, because remember, terms end.
Right.
If they're a member of a committee, if you appoint them as a member of the council, it's kind of, then you got to look for a new one. Whereas if they're an at-large member, that person can continue with the job. And I think, to me, that makes a lot of sense, because I would hate to get partway through and then have somebody that's been doing all the work. Have to step aside because of the requirement of a counselor. But the administration and myself have talked about it, and there will be a council, at least a counselor, on the committee, as a large member.
And again, I only bring that up mainly just to keep some communication continuity between the committee and council.
It was always a plan.
Whomever sitting councils are, that they're getting fair communication. Because, you know, it's easy for things to fall through the hole, through the gaps. You end up with, like JB said, some politics getting involved and kind of keeping tabs on where things are at. It's crucial.
Yep, understood. Any other questions? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine, FY twenty-five budget transfers. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine, appropriation, general funds appropriations, transfers, and adjustments for fiscal year twenty-five. The purpose is to transfer the fiscal year twenty-five appropriations to cover unanticipated shortfalls as follows. I'm going to read the department number, the source, the type, the department, and the amount, sources, one forty-seven personnel, treasure collector, forty-two thousand, one hundred dollars, total source, forty-two thousand, one hundred dollars. Uses are for three ninety-five expenses for Norfolk Aggie, seventeen thousand, one hundred, and six thirty expenses for recreation, twenty-five thousand, for total amount of use, forty-two thousand, one hundred. Be it moved, motion be it moved and voted by the town council, that the sum of forty-two thousand, one hundred dollars be transferred from the sources indicated above to the uses and in the respective amounts stated above prior to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Road Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, Jamie.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, just for everybody's edification that may be watching at home, or on YouTube, or Zoom, or live on Franklin TV, as the numbers showed earlier, this is to close out the FY twenty-five budget, the current fiscal year. It says nothing to do with the budget deliberation that just went on. Number two, I want to point out, I went back and looked, every year in the last, I think, five or six years, the amount of money that has to be transferred to cover a deficit in an account has gotten lower and lower and lower. Five, six, seven years ago, we were at the few hundred thousand we were transferring. And why is that? Because our department heads and our staff manage their money extraordinarily well, and they're all within budget. The one, a couple of exceptions were things out of our control. Norfolk Aggie had a few more students that enrolled there, so we have to cover that. And then the recreation department, it's a good problem to have, but the programs there were more popular than they were the previous year. The revenue does come in for that. The problem is, is that you have to report that to the state as unanticipated revenue through the free cash process, so I can't just take revenue that was collected a month ago for a program and do this. The good news is, is the finance team manages their budgets well, and because there was a four-month gap in between, the transition between Kerry and Anne Marie, there's some salary money that's there that we can easily make that transfer. So we're proposing to use the treasurer's money to cover those other two accounts. And again, forty-two thousand dollars to be here out of a hundred and fifty million-dollar budget.
It's not bad.
Is like microscopic. So kudos to all these folks out here and their staff on how well they manage their budgets every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash thirty-nine. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash forty, increased expenditure limits for FY twenty-twenty-six on certain departmental revolving funds established by Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, as provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three and a half, as amended. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution twenty-five dash forty, increased expenditure limits for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six on certain departmental revolving funds established by Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, as provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, as amended. Whereas the Franklin Town Council has adopted a bylaw establishing a chapter of the Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, Departmental Revolving Funds, as provided in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and a half, as amended by Chapter two-eighteen of the Legislative Acts of two thousand and sixteen. And whereas Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section forty, fifty-three E and a half, as amended, further provides that the municipality's legislative body shall annually set the expenditure limit for each revolving fund established under the local bylaw. Whereas the Franklin Town Council on June fourth, twenty twenty-five, with Resolution twenty-five dash twenty-two, approved expenditure limits of the revolving funds, but now finds these limits need to be increased. Now therefore be it moved and voted, the Franklin Town Council hereby sets new expenditure limits for the revolving funds established under Franklin Town Code, Chapter seventy-three, Departmental Revolving Funds for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, specified below as follows. Section five B, Senior Center Activities Program, two hundred thousand dollars, and Section five C, Senior Center Supportive Day Program, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Road Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty.
Second.
Motion and second discussion, Jamie.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. This is a proposal to increase the allotments that are allowed in the two senior center revolving funds. For example, why are we doing, requesting this? For example, the supportive day program, those rates are going to be increasing to try to continue to offset the cost of the service, so that that lessens the burden on the operating budget. That service also is getting more expensive, and so these limits have not been raised. Certainly in the ten years I've been here, they've not been raised. So with some of those dynamics, with the program and activities fees, and with the revenues coming in due to the popularity of the cafe and those activities at the senior center, we need to request a bump up in the authorized limits to be able to be transferred into those accounts. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash forty-one, Acceptance of Gifts, Senior Center, ninety-five dollars. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-one, Acceptance of Gifts, Senior Center. Whereas the Franklin Senior Center has received a very generous donation in the total amount of ninety-five dollars and zero cents to be used at the discretion of the department as follows. Senior Center, ninety-five dollars, donations to be applied at the discretion of the Senior Center through Council on Agent Gift Fund to provide services and programs to senior citizens in the Franklin community. Joiner information is included in the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five Town Council Meeting Agenda Packet. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Council of Town of Franklin, on behalf of Senior Center, gratefully accepts these generous donations to be used at the discretion of the department for the purposes noted above. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Road Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty-one.
Second.
Motion and a second, obviously, again, just a big thank you to those continuing to support not only our senior center, but all of the other departments within the community. So thank you again for your generous gifts. Any further discussion?
Sir.
Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-one. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Town administrators report.
Just a couple highlights, Mr. Chairman. Through you, the council, I just want to recognize our Public Health Director, Kathy Liberty, who received the Mass. Environmental Health Association President's Award this year. I leaned over to Amy, and I said, I honestly believe, like, the vast majority of our department heads at some point in the last couple of years have been recognized with awards like these, or have been rewarded by their peers to be on leadership positions in their organizations. And I'm really happy for Kathy. She's absolutely incredibly dynamic and really one of the best you'll ever find at what she does. And she won her award this year for her public outreach and education, which is ironic, given what we heard earlier, but I know that she is getting hundreds and hundreds of people at health fairs and other clinics she's doing, and she also is part of that award, won Innovator of the Year. So that's your Public Health Director here in Franklin. So, you know, again, they're doing really great stuff. Yep. Thank you for starting that clapping. Well deserved. Another round of applause, Kate, who we just saw, and I didn't plan this, trust me, I didn't do this on purpose, but it's serendipitous. We were able to sponsor her to get her Mass. Municipal Association Certificate in Local Government Leadership and Management from Suffolk University, so she just graduated last week. We just, also, one of our newest hires for the police department, a local resident, a Franklin-born-and-raised resident. I don't think we oftentimes get as many kudos as we should for hiring local Franklin kids, which we do in the fire and police department and throughout, but a huge congratulations. Many of you probably know the Samuels family. Jalen Samuels is expected to graduate from the Boyleston Police Academy on this Friday, June twentieth, so we want to congratulate both Jalen and the Samuels family on becoming a Franklin police officer. Great job, Jalen. We'll get to more of this in a minute, but I think everybody had an opportunity to see the new fire ladder truck. Obviously, this is a huge addition to the fleet, and while I understand sometimes a little bit of dealing with getting something new like that, I also want to link that fire truck and that ladder truck to those stats that were up there. One of the reasons why people feel safe among the many is because Chief McLaughlin and the entire fire department has obviously prepared us well. So while it's a lot of money, we all know it could have been, if we ordered it today, a lot more money, and we look at the fiscal impacts at the fifty-eight-month turnaround time, the Town of Franklin now, for a generation, doesn't have to worry about that ladder truck and that people can still continue to feel safe. So we want to thank the fire department for that. Also want to thank the Strawberry Scroll. You know, we've talked to them for a long time about reorganizing some of the roadway. Just huge congratulations to Lisa and the partnership and the board and the community for a great Strawberry Scroll. For the community that didn't, was not aware, you will see videos. You know, something else that I think speaks beyond the level of pride that we can even put into words, the Habitat for Humanity event before here at five o'clock, you know, I think it really goes without saying, but I said it at the press conference. I got here ten years ago. This is not a comment about my predecessor or anybody, but there were just a lot of people that thought we should knock that building over. You know, it was past its prime. It was going to fall in. You could blow on it, and it would keel over. All of you should be really proud on this council for not giving in to some of those pleas in the community to knock it down, sell off that piece of property, and make money off it, right? And sure, it may have been a better decision, maybe we would have made a couple hundred thousand dollars on selling the lot. But when you look at the hundred people or so that were at the conference that many of you were at today, and you think about the connection between community preservation, historical preservation, and being able to attract into our community an organization like Habitat for Humanity, I hope everybody in this community is very appreciative of the fact that, we heard in the survey, people want to preserve their local character. Well, here's a huge win toward that, right? Particularly over on Washington Street, that area town. And I know some jokes were made about the chairman going to church there, and his initials being in one of the pews, but I sincerely hope for him, who told me many stories of how his parents made him go there with winter coats in the middle of January with no heat, no insulation, you know, I hope that this is a project that continues to bring in that community pride and that spirit, and I think it accomplishes a lot of the goals up there. So congratulations to all of you on the council, the Historical Commission, the ZBA, who never gets a lot of applause, but they were very supportive of this project from day one. They did a great job on this. The Community Preservation Committee, just a really great community effort, and, you know, hopefully by fall, we'll know of hopefully a Franklin family that can habitat that unit. And one fact that we all found out today, or at least I learned, was any parcel that goes to a family with Habitat for Humanity is required to put in two-hundred-and-fifty hours of sweat equity into the part, into the actual building themselves. So that's really cool to show that connection. That's something I didn't know, but that was really a great event, and congratulations to all of you in the community for putting all that together. And by the way, Mark, I did give you a shout-out, because I know you did a lot of work. I know you don't look for any gratitude, but you really did, and Habitat expressed their thanks to you in particular for, you know, the unbelievable amount of legal documents, I think you and I went through over four years.
It was challenging.
It was challenging, yeah. And finally, I'd be obviously remiss if we didn't congratulate Chief McLaughlin on his retirement. For those that don't know, this is actually his second retirement. He actually retired in the state of Rhode Island before this. You know, there's nothing I'm going to say that's going to summarize the impact, just look at the numbers. Look at the numbers. I think what we've just been through over the last year and a half with overrides in this community, somewhere along the line, I think the, this survey is showing the engagement issue for sure, but certainly it's showing up there that Chief McLaughlin's legacy, in addition to Chief Lynch, all the members of the police department and the fire department, you know, their legacy is pretty well cemented. So congratulations to Jim on his retirement. We're all going to miss him very much. He's not gone yet. He's still got a few more months. I could never speak enough words, and I know you'll all give your congratulations to him as well. There's almost nothing I can do to summarize his incredible friendship.
Well, I'm hoping.
Last thing I'll say is, the last thing I'll say is, just for clarity, we were here six years ago, it feels like sixty, where we nominated him as the fire chief. I gave him a very clear set of directives. By the way, every fire chief in Norfolk County knows those directives, because they read that memo. I gave him a four-point plan. He had that plan completed within like twelve months. And one of the most important things for me, and I mean this from my heart and sincerely, and I know the chief does too, which is a big part of his decision, when we post for his replacement, we'll be posting that shortly, we are posting an internal-only posting for that, for the fire chief, so internal candidates will be the only eligible candidates for the fire chief in Franklin. And so I'm looking straight at a couple of you, several of you, seriously, because this was an issue, you know, six, seven, eight years ago, and Chief McLaughlin and the whole staff have been able to correct that. In my feeling, I think we have such a great police and fire department. It's my anticipation, and I think Karen's as well, that you've got hopefully at least a full generation, if not longer, of incredible paramedics. Your leadership team in both police and fire should hopefully be here for well beyond our tenure here. So congratulations to Chief McLaughlin on an amazing job, and we know he won't fully retire.
Well, I was kind of looking to see, I know TJ's here, I hope he brought his handcuffs.
They need a lot of out of the build.
Handcuff them both together.
So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jamie. Subcommittee reports, I think, did he receive them?
No.
No, okay. Future agenda items. Oh, yeah, I'll get the GA, oh, go ahead, GATRA.
Just quickly, we approved the FY twenty-six budget, but there are a whole bunch of unknowns, both in state funding and federal funding, so I'll be back.
More to come, more to come.
More to come.
Good. Counselor. Good. Counselor Sheridan, future agenda items.
Yes, Chair, for you and the two of the town administration, I'd like to start the process of looking into forming a historical commission for the historical district.
Historic-
District commission.
Yeah. And it was a recommendation, I think, in the master plan, too.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, Patrick. Counselor Frangello, future agenda.
I'll just add, wait, you know, Mark Minkellius come for us and asked for this. I know that we've said that we've discussed it again. I think that the idea of an actual affordable housing inventory and target is a fantastic idea for the community. Would love to at least discuss that this summer as we've stated.
Absolutely. Counselor Hamblin?
I'm nothing else to add. Thank you.
Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Counselor Chandler?
Nothing at this time.
Counselor-
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Delarco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No, sir.
Okay. Counselor comments. Counselor Frangello?
Yeah, my main comment is just extreme gratitude and a sense of loss for the chief that caught me by surprise. Yeah, we're, we have so many great public leaders and yet even among them, Chief McLaughlin has stood out. Yeah, for what it's worth, you likely don't know, I look to you as, you know, for how to carry yourself, how to present yourself, how to speak for your team and speak about your team, how to speak to public officials. I think you're a great example of a leader and, yeah, your loss we felt.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to cry-
You're really snapping.
Whatever Kobe just said. I'm crying over that because I too will miss the chief. I was just thinking during the Strawberry Stroll time, the first time I met chief was at a Strawberry Stroll. And we were dancing in the street together. It's when I was, still had a shop and I was down there as a, I had my own booth there, but I got to meet the chief and his son, I think, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And how grateful I am for him. And I was just glad that he came. And now we have like internal candidates and we have a sustainable fire department. I think it's amazing what he's done. And I also would like to thank the Old Colony Habitat for Humanity, the groundbreaking for that to me was kind of like a drop-the-mic moment. You know, for so many years, we didn't have any money for historic preservation. We had open space funds, we had all this other thing, but nobody wanted to put money away for that. And I thought that was really a shame. And so, that was a wonderful moment. And I'm really super excited about that. And so, it's like, whoa, get a little emotional, but it's okay. And don't forget about the farmers market on Friday. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Cormier-Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My apologies for being late, but I wanted to get here for at least the second half of the meeting. Gosh, it's sure not easy to watch your parents get old.
Understood.
And literally left my dad on a hospital bed. And, but he knew I wanted to be here.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger.
Yep.
Counselor Chandler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank everyone that came out to support your collective bargaining contracts tonight. Hopefully, that's what we'll be doing shortly. And Jamie, you might remember this. In 2019, when we had our famous COVID-on-the-football-field meeting, I did say to you that you scored a touchdown when you hired Jim. And you did. You scored a touchdown when you did that. So, we appreciate that. And now, what's that, six years later or yeah?
Six, exactly.
Six years later?
Now, sick, well, since COVID, but six years-
Seems like forever.
Yeah, okay.
I know.
And speaking of six, this council only has six more meetings until the new council comes in. Six. So, it's going to go quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Chandler. Counselor Plegrey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too was shocked tonight to hear about Chief McLaughlin. Sometimes secrets are kept, don't they? And I even saw you and talked to you before I came in. So, there we go. So sorry to hear it, but I certainly wish the best for you. And I know when you came, six years ago, you had said it was going to be for just a period of time. And all of a sudden, that time is here. So, sorry to hear that, but you know what? I think we'll do some things that keep, to keep you really busy during these next three, four months that you're going to be here.
[laughing]
Make it so that you didn't want to leave. Let's see, I think that was just about it, just to say about him, other than I'm pleased that we started the committee, the resolution for the 250th celebration for the town, because you do need time. If you're going to be booking things and all, you need a lot of time beforehand. And that's about it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Plegrey. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, chief, I, I've loved working with you over the years. And granted, I'll be in a short period of time, but one of the things that I've noticed and I didn't explicitly express to you was a great judge of character, truly comes from the people that work for you. And I have had the opportunity over the years to kind of speak to many of the firefighters and paramedics at the police station, just asking general questions. Are they happy? Are they happy with the changes? Are they happy with the leadership? And I cannot tell you how positive that feedback has been, how happy that everyone has become. Because I think Bobby and myself and Tom, who've been on this council as long as we have, hasn't, that feeling hadn't always been a resounding thing in the past. But now, it filters through and you can feel it. And it's hap, there's a, there's a sense of camaraderie, there's a sense of positivity that you really brought to our department. And I can't even begin to thank you for that. It's a real sense of leadership, but yet, as a team member, you know, you never came off like a, like a boss, like, hey, you do this, you do that. You were part of the team. You really threw yourself into the mix and you helped bring the department together to the cohesiveness that it is today. And you set some very clear guides and structure in place that I am fully confident that the sitting members that are on the department, that we're going to find the next leader. So, you've been an inspiration, you've been a strong leader. And I want to thank you for all of the hard work that you've put into making our community that much better. You know, I mean, the, like, it's been mentioned tonight, the numbers speak for themselves. You're going to be missed. I know you're not going far. The good news is, you don't have to deal with Massachusetts drivers. Just joking. But chief, thank you, thank you again. I'm sure we'll speak again after this. You're not going too, too far quite yet. But I am curious to see who, who we ultimately look into within the organization to see our next of the leaders are going to be. I'm excited for that proposition as well. Another quick note, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that I just wanted to mention, congratulations to the group that came in today that was going off to-
Electric Youth.
Electric Youth. Because I know that seemed like that was hours ago, which it was. So, congratulations to them going off to Europe. I also wanted to mention kind of an off-topic thing, not only because I'm just a proud dad. My son actually is in a play in Hawkington. Hawkington has their Arts and Cultural Center just right next to Hawkington High School. And they're putting on the Judy Garland Show. They had two shows this past weekend. They have two more shows coming up-
Awesome.
-this Friday night and this Saturday night. What is particularly keen about these, this particular show was it actually is a local community theater group where people aged probably in their early 60s, down to my son's age and younger, get to participate. And this woman who plays Judy Garland just, wow. She sung for two and a half hours straight. And it was a great, great presentation. I wanted to promote it for everybody here to go over to Hawkington. And one of the things that, and I think Counselor Frangello and I know Mel definitely feels about this, is it would be great to get a cultural center, a lot like the one that Hawkington has here. And I know my wife has been saying it to me a lot, you know, hey, it would be great if we had something like that here in Franklin. I couldn't agree with her more. It would be great to add to all of the wonderful things that we already have. But other than that, great Strawberry Stroll, I went there. It was great to see it extended all the way up to Dean College and to see that, that many more booths and to see how many more people were there. I took a picture. It's weird because every single year I go to Strawberry Stroll and the Harvest Fest, Steve knows, I stand at Union Street and take a picture from all fans. And you could see the big group. Now, I had to stand all the way back in School Street and look all the way down to, towards the bridge. And it was such a great sight to see. And it was a beautiful day for it. Oddly, it didn't rain, which was good, or at least a little bit during the day.
It was a Friday.
So, yeah, it was a Friday. It wasn't sad. So, other than that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Delarco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, chief, you know, you're a good friend. I'm retiring. You're retiring. Looks like we can spend a lot more time together. Just don't change your phone number.
[laughing]
No, but you did a great job. Like Counselor Jones said, Counselor Mercer, no, before you came, we were up at fire station dealing with stuff that was just unbelievable. And Chuck's laughing because he was there. He was, he was the one calling us to go up. But no, seriously, you really turned that department around. And I can't thank you enough. And I appreciate what you did there, but I appreciate your friendship, too. And that will go on forever. But on another note, I have to say condolences to the Koenig family. They lived here for about 30 years. They moved down to Thalmud about 30 years ago. And we put them to rest today. Just so you know, if you think your life is bad, Dick suddenly had a brain aneurysm and passed away a week ago, maybe two weeks ago. Put things in, in concept is, he was supposed to walk his daughter down the aisle a week from Saturday. Kylie's getting married next Saturday. And Jonah, who graduated with Kobe, is getting married in August. So, if you think your life is bad, sometimes it isn't. So, please, keep them in their prayers because they're, they don't live in Franklin anymore, but they were one hell of a family coached with Dick. He's a great guy. So, just keep them in your prayers.
Thank you, Counselor Delarco. Okay, just a couple of things. First of all, once again, I'd like to say thank you to Kate the Great and-
She's great.
And Sonia. Yeah, she's great.
She worked in Suffolk.
So, thank you so much and Sonia for the work on the survey. As we said, a lot of information there, a lot of things to dive into and see where we as a community can improve. Secondly, Strawberry Stroll, congratulations Downtown Partnership. What a great job. The weather could not have been better for it. Not too hot, not too cold. And increasing it up Main Street, up towards the library, I thought was a great addition. But it was very well attended. And really, when, you know, I was standing on Main Street with Roberta Trahan, and she looked at me and she said, "This is Franklin. This is what it's all about." And no truer words could have been said because that's exactly who we are and what, what we're all about. So, then, lastly, chief, I'll get like you did. So, we've worked together for the last six years. And I know, I was on that search committee. And I know when you went out the door after your interview, Jamie looked at me and I looked at him. And we both said, "We're done." We knew who we wanted. And then, I think we talked, or you talked about three to five years was probably the timeframe. You've given us six. You've turned a department totally 180 degrees. And we can't thank you enough for all you've done. And your emphasis on it being a team project and inclusive of your battalion chiefs, your captains, your lieutenants, your paramedics, all included in the decision-making up there. And just can't say enough good things. And I know the Greenwood Inn is very happy. But we'll see you around for the next couple of months, for sure. Okay, with that-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I thank the chief, too?
You certainly can. Sorry.
I was supposed to say thank you, too. I, I haven't even said, but-
No, no.
The event, especially thank the chief. My dad was a firefighter for over 30 years. And I know that they put in. And also, the event at the, the old church was great, too.
Thank you, Patrick.
I'm sorry, Patrick mentioned one thing.
No.
Only because of the-
No.
-brought it up. The eighth grade Annie Sullivan had their last official eighth grade graduation this week. And Patrick and my daughter were part of that group. So, there's, that was the last eighth grade to go through Annie Sullivan. It's a sad change, but it's in the book.
Understood. Okay, we do have a need for an executive session. And it's collective bargaining, all-town unions to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on. And a clerk will read the motion.
You need to declare.
I declare, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for collective bargaining, all-town unions to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, if an open meeting law may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and chair so declares.
And we will return, we will return.
And we shall return to open session upon conclusion.
Second. Call a roll.
We have to roll calls.
See, this is my ask, do we have to roll?
Cormier-Ledger?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Frangello?
Yes.
Plegrey?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Jones, yes.
Vice chair?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Nine zero to enter, sir.
We will enter executive session, be back soon.
Poygrie.
Yes.
Amblynn.
Yes.
Jones, yes. Vice Chair.
Yes.
We will enter executive session, be back soon.
He hasn't come on yet, here he is.
There he is.
Yep. Tell me when you're ready, Chris.
I'm ready.
Okay. Okay, we-
Recording in progress.
We have returned to open session, and the first item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-two, ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Library Union, Franklin Public Library Staff Association, Massachusetts Library Staff Association, Local four-two-nine-eight American Federation of Teachers, and American Federation Massachusetts AFL-CIO. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-two, ratification of memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Library Union, Franklin Public Library Staff Association, Massachusetts Library Staff Association, the MLSA, Local forty-two ninety-eight American Federation of Teachers, AFT, and AFT Massachusetts AFL-CIO. Be resolved by the Town of Franklin, acting by and through the Franklin Town Council, the provisions of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Franklin Public Library Staff Association, Massachusetts Library Association, MLSA, Local forty-two ninety-eight American Federation of Teachers, AFT, and AFT Massachusetts AFL-CIO, dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, are hereby ratified. The provisions contained in the memorandum of agreement shall be in effect from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and shall become part of the existing collective bargaining agreement, and this resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty-two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Anything, Jamie?
Um, no.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-two, a majority votes required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash forty-three, ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the DPW Union, ASME AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight, Department of Public Works. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-three, ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the DPW Union, AFSCME AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight Department of Public Works. Be resolved by the Franklin Town Council, acting by and through the Franklin Town Council, the provisions of memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin, AFSCME, and AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight Department of Public Works, dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, and hereby ratified. The provisions contained in the memorandum of agreement shall be in effect from July first, twenty twenty-five, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and shall become part of the existing collective bargaining agreement. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty-three.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I should have said earlier-
Yeah, earlier for all of them.
Well, I just wanted to make sure, two points. One, these are all the collective bargaining agreements that have been signed with the memorandum of understanding with each of the unions. This does codify the two-and-a-half percent COLA for each of the unions over each of the three years. We talked about that during some of the budget meetings. And just if people are asking, all of our collective bargaining agreements are on the Human Resources website. Once these are all ratified and done with all the paperwork and the formatting, we will post all of these contracts publicly over the summer probably at some point, once all the fine print is done and all the signatures are done. So, if there's anybody watching at home and they're like, "What's going on?" That was a quick overview, but the collective bargaining agreements will all be online. And if people are curious about what the agreements are now, they can just go to the HR website and read every agreement for themselves. So I just want to make sure we're being transparent about this. We post all our agreements online, and everything will be up online.
Once again, repeat the COLAs with all of the unions.
Yep.
Are all two-and-a-half.
Two-and-a-half across the board each year for all seven unions. And the school FEA unit, the teachers ratified their COLA at two-and-a-half percent over three years last week. We voted on that publicly. I voted in the affirmative, and so we're back to COLA equity among all of our unions, which is really great news.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments on Resolution twenty-five forty-three? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-three. A majority votes required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash forty-four, ratification of memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and Custodians Union, ASME AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight Custodians. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-four, ratification of memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and Custodians Union, AFSCME AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight Custodians. Be resolved by the Town of Franklin, acting by and through the Franklin Town Council, the provisions of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the AFSCME AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight Custodians, dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, are hereby ratified. The provisions contained in this memorandum of agreement shall be in effect from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and shall become part of the existing collective bargaining agreement. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty-four.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-four. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash forty-five, ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Public Facilities Union, ASME AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight Public Facilities Employees. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-five, ratification of memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Public Facilities Union, AFSCME AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight Public Facilities Employees. Be resolved by the Franklin Town Council, acting by and through the Franklin- Town of Franklin, acting by and through the Franklin Town Council, the provisions of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the AFSCME AFL-CIO Local twelve ninety-eight Public Facilities Maintenance Employees dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, are hereby ratified. The provisions contained in the memorandum of agreement shall be in effect from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and shall become part of an existing collective bargaining agreement. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty-five.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-five. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash forty-six, ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Professional Firefighters of Franklin International Association of Firefighters, Local twenty-six thirty-seven. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-six, ratification of memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Professional Firefighters of Franklin International Association of Firefighters, Local twenty-six thirty-seven. Be resolved by the Town of Franklin, acting by and through the Franklin Town Council, the provisions of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and Professional Firefighters of Franklin International Association of Firefighters, Local twenty-six thirty-seven, dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, are hereby ratified. The provisions contained in the memorandum of agreement shall be in effect from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and shall become part of the existing collective bargaining agreement. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty-six.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Counselor Cormier Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to state, I did hear from a paramedic who wanted to clarify for me that we have firefighters in Franklin, not firemen. So I apologize for any of my previous times when I've referred to them as firemen. I will certainly be more careful in the future.
Thank you. Counselor Cormier Ledger. Any further comments, discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-six. A majority votes required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, Resolution twenty-five dash forty-seven, ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Franklin Police Association. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-seven, ratification of memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and Franklin Police Association. Be resolved by the Town of Franklin, acting by and through the Franklin Town Council, the provisions of memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and Franklin Police Association dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, are hereby ratified. The provisions contained in the memorandum of agreement shall be in effect from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and shall become part of the existing collective bargaining agreement. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty-seven.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-seven. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-five dash forty-eight, ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Franklin Police Sergeants Union. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is Resolution twenty-five dash forty-eight, ratification of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and Franklin Police Sergeants Union. Be resolved by the Town of Franklin, acting by and through the Franklin Town Council, the provisions of the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Franklin and the Franklin Police Sergeants Union dated June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, are hereby ratified. The provisions contained in the memorandum of agreement shall be in effect from July first, twenty twenty-five, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, shall become part of an existing collective bargaining agreement. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution twenty-five dash forty-eight.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty-eight. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'd just like to say once again, thank you to our administration, our administrative teams, our department heads, our local union teams, negotiating teams from both sides for a good season. And thank you all for all the hard work it took to bring all these ratifications together for us tonight. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Non-debatable. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, one and all.